Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the April 10th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. At seven o'clock, we start, so we'll start off with that. Let's start off with a roll call, please, commissioners.
Anderson?
Here.
Grimes?
Here.
Hogue?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Rivera? Bill?
Here. All right, we do have a quorum, so we can go on, continue with the meeting. First agenda item will be the minutes, or item C of the agenda, will be minutes of the March 13th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. I do have one note in there that if you would strike out on the first item, I let me see here, on item B for the roll call, it has me as being an I, and I was not here, so I'll have to recuse myself for voting on this, but that's just a strike, because I am also listed as absent, so if you would just strike out my name under the I's. Do we have any questions, or comments, or a motion to approve?
I have just a comment. I noticed that item B, 2C, Agenda Item 2776, the motion was seconded by Young, and then he voted nay, and I just wanted to confirm that you had seconded it and then voted nay? Okay, I just know if that was right, sorry.
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
That's with the correction described by Chair Bill, correct?
Yes, and a clarification if this was necessary, too.
I don't think it was, I don't think there was any change.
Okay, all right, all right. So we have a motion to approve by Mr. Hague.
I'll second it.
And we have another one by Mr. Grimes. So the motion was brought up by Commissioner Hague, and seconded by Commissioner Grimes. Let's take a roll call on that.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hogue?
Yes.
Bill?
Okay, going on, we'll go on to audience time. That's a time when anybody in the meeting room here can bring up anything that's pertinent to the business that's on hand, or if there's other business that involves planning and zoning, this is your time to bring it up. If you do, if you are here for a comment on one of the items that we're looking at, we'll give you time to swear you in and bring you in for that individually. Okay, it looks like, yes ma'am.
Step to the podium, please.
Okay, so, quick question, just to make sure that I understand. If you're voting on a zoning problem that's gonna happen on 12th Street and near 11th Street, is this the time for me to talk? Okay.
We'll give you time, thanks, though, for asking. Okay, moving along, then, is there any old business? Okay.
I have a question, too.
Could you speak in the microphone?
I'm here for a variance, should I speak up now, or?
No.
You call the person?
Yes, we'll call you when it's, it's an item, and we'll call you up for that. Thank you, sir. Okay, I don't believe there was any old business that I was aware of, did you hear of any, or?
No old business.
Okay, so let's move on to new business. First agenda item will be zoning calendar number 2779, that's a variance for a fence height requirement on the side yard of 11 North Frolic Avenue. City, who's gonna represent that from the city?
Sam Lapine, sir, Assistant Planner. Is that the applicant? Is someone able to translate for him? Okay, so if you'd like, you don't have to stand up right now, but you can translate for him the staff's presentation, so if you all will just have a seat, you will be allowed to speak after staff has given their presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. This is Planning and Zoning Calendar, Item 2779, address 11 North Frolic, this is a fence variance in Ward Three. The limit for the height in side yards is six feet tall, and this fence goes over it by several inches. Some background, the area is surrounded by entirely R3 residential and B2 zoning. Just to situate yourself, this property is next to North Green Bay Road and Washington Street, right on the board of the B2 zone. Here's some pictures, so the fence is already constructed, this is a retroactive variance. And a bit more detail, as I said before, fences in side yards can't be above six feet in height. The bulk of this fence is six feet in height, but the ornamentation on the sides, it's kind of hard to see, but I believe the two little bulbs on either side bring it above the six-foot limit. Couple options if it's denied, it can either be replaced or modified to conform with existing standards, and if this variance request is approved, it'll remain as is. Here are your findings of fact. Do you have any questions for me?
No questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Young?
I do, and if it's more appropriate for the petitioners, just let me know, but just to clarify, the ornamentation is, that consists of the corner post, as well as the decoration up on top, the iron, it looks like ironwork up on top there?
To the best of my knowledge, the only non-conforming bit is the iron on top, the two, one to two-inch steel ball.
Okay, thanks.
It is all the way across. My apologies, I believe it's actually the whole section across.
Any other questions? Okay, would the people, would the requestor and his interpreter please come up, I'd like to swear you in? Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you state your name, and your, in this case, introduce yourself as the interpreter, and if you could introduce him in English, so we could keep that on the record?
Okay, my name is Emma Soberanes, and I'm here to interpret for Juan.
Juan Luis Hernandez.
Juan Luis Hernandez.
Yes, they have him, okay. So commissioners, do we have any questions? I certainly like to make a comment, just the fact that, did you do this yourself?
Si.
Yes.
You're an artisan, very nice job. This beautiful fence. I don't think it distracts anything from the looks of the neighborhood, it really dresses it up, nice job. So, any other questions? Teddy?
It's a gate, is it a gate?
No, it's not a gate.
It's not a gate, okay. I agree, it's beautiful, by the way.
It does open. Oh, se abre, no?
Si, yeah.
Oh, then it is a gate, sorry. Because it does open.
So no other questions? Do we have any motions? To approve or disapprove?
I make a motion to adopt the findings of fact to approve the variance as set forth in zoning calendar 2779.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hogue?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, great work, too, by the way, sir.
I might add, it is great work, but it would be nice if you got a permit before you did it. Because that's why you're here.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, yes, and you signed in, thank you. Going on to the second item of business would be zoning calendar number 2780, and that is also a variance for a fence height in the rear yard of 723 Pine Street. City staff, who's gonna represent that? The city can make a comment first.
Good evening, commissioners, that would be me, I'm pulling up the presentation now, just give me a second here. All right, so I'm here to present the last two items on the agenda tonight, the first one being zoning calendar 2780. Again, as the chairman stated, this is another fence variance, sort of similar to the previous one, except this one has not been constructed yet, it is currently a six-foot fence in the backyard of 723 Pine Street. We received the applicant, we received the application from the owner of this property, and it's an R3 zone, residential to the north, south, and west, and it's adjacent to the Robert McClory Bike Path, which is one of the problems the applicant has spoken to us about, and the house was originally built in 1935, and the fence was put in from 1995, it looked like. So here's the zoning map, the lot is highlighted, it's pretty close to one of the items that were on the agenda last month, so if you can orient yourself, Grand Avenue is to the south, and then Buttrick is sort of to the west, and as I stated before, the bike path is directly behind the property. So here's a picture of the current fence, as you can see, it's about six feet, but there does seem to be a drop-off from the bike path right before the property. The owner has stated that noise is a big nuisance, as well as dust, the bike path is pretty much a gravel consistency, and he stated a lot of, you know, loud motor vehicles, bikes and scooters and things like that go up and down the path, and just cause a disturbance, mostly dust and noise on his property. And so here's some more info, the homeowner, as I said, is requesting a variance for a taller fence due to the property being adjacent to the bike path, which has caused dust and noise to come onto his property. It is one of the core neighborhoods in Waukegan, we haven't received any feedback from other departments or any support or objection from the public. Denied, this fence will remain six feet as it is today, if approved, a new eight-foot fence will be allowed to be constructed on the property. And here are the findings of facts for variances. That concludes my presentation, if any commissioners have questions, I'll open it to them now. Oh, yeah, sure. Correct, yeah. I don't believe there's another eight-foot fence in that area.
And that may, that may be a question that can be addressed by the applicant.
Tyler, do you know, in this particular instance here, who maintains the McClory back bike trail? Is that the county, or is it?
I believe, yes, the county, they control the whole bike path from, yeah, beginning to end in Waukegan.
I'm just wondering if there could be any kind of substance that could be put down on it to control the dust?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, they actually have a plan to asphalt the entire trail, so there is a stretch, I believe, by the Lions Woods area that is asphalt now, they haven't given us a date, I don't believe, but we've had heard that they plan to asphalt the entire stretch through Waukegan, but as I stated, I haven't, you know, not a clue of when that would be.
Then there was an issue of the noise, too, that the, you know, the, was brought up in the discussion, and as far as the noise, it is supposed to be a bike path, so it would just be something that Lake County should be probably contacted to, to inform that there's people abusing that.
Right, yeah, and we also have the city noise ordinance, so if there was excessive noise coming, that can certainly be a police issue, yes.
I think one of the things that happens is ATVs use that, and they're not supposed to be on it, but it happens, and so some of this is policing by the county, and I can sympathize with the neighborhood there.
Is there anything else from the other commissioners, any questions for the city? Okay, moving forward, then, can we have you, sir, can I swear you in? Please, right, yes. Do you swear to tell the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you state your name?
It's Don Taters.
And you're the owner, right?
Right.
Okay, tell us your story.
Well, I understand that it's, it's an odd request, but it's gonna help a lot to have an eight-foot fence in the back, as far as the dust, we can't open our windows in the summertime, and as far as them paving the bike path, I've been in contact with the guy that's in charge of that, and he said it was gonna happen last year, so, you know, depending on their budget, who knows when it's gonna get done, in the meantime, I had to run my air conditioner in the summertime all the time, because I can't open windows. I put siding on my house last year, and it's already filthy, I'm gonna have to, you know, power wash it, within six months of putting new siding on. So I don't want to have to live three or four years before it gets paved, and not be able to open up my windows, and I don't think that having an eight-foot fence is that odd to have, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's a bike path, I mean, nobody uses it except for the people that are using the bikes and stuff like that, and the motorcycles and everything else like that, so I don't see where it's an eyesore, it's gonna be a vinyl fence, which is, you know, you know, no maintenance, so I don't see why, you know, you guys wouldn't let me, you know.
Have you, sir, have you petitioned the county, basically, and with some help from your neighbors, basically, to state the same situation, or?
I've talked to the person that is in charge of the bike path, and like I said, he said paving is an issue that they want to do, but who knows when it's gonna be, you know, that was last year, you know, so, and I talked to him this year, and he says, well, it's not part of our plan right now, so years can go by, in the meantime, I'm paying higher electric bills for my air conditioner, because I can't open my windows, I mean, that's ridiculous, you know? And it's mostly motorcycles, you think that is a few bikes, motorcycles, four-wheelers, and a couple occasions, I seen a car back there, so that's how ridiculous, it's not patrolled, it's not, nobody keeps these people from being out there, that shouldn't be there, it's not for motor vehicles. If it was people walking or bike, you know, bicycle, I have no objection to that, but, you know, nobody can control it, you know?
Noel, do you know if we have any liaison that, with the county, that we could, you know, help them out a little bit by, you know, trying to present that to them, and see if they could, you know, give them a little bit more power from the city?
We are talking to the Lake County DOT about their planned improvements, so the next time we meet, we'll definitely mention this to them, and that we've heard from adjacent residents and other users that there's ATV usage and even vehicles, so we'll definitely share that with them, yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, do I have a motion to accept or to decline?
I'll move that we adopt the findings of fact and recommend, and approve the variance as set forth in zoning calendar 2780.
That was brought up by Commissioner Haynes, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hague, second that motion? Roll call vote, please.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hogue?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, really do.
All right, going on to the third item of business, we have a zoning calendar number 2781, which is a conditional use permit for outdoor storage in an area at 1445 11th Street. City, could you?
Good evening.
A date on that?
I would love to. Good evening again, Tyler Williams, Planner, here to talk about zoning calendar 2781. We got an application from Randall Viselik and CQX LLC for a conditional use permit to allow outdoor storage in the industrial district, and this is in the second ward at 1445 11th Street. Just to give you some background on the site, it's in the industrial district, for those that don't know, it was, it's been vacant for about a little longer than two years now, it used to be the South Wire and Coleman Cable Building, and it's pretty much adjacent or across the street from a residential neighborhood to the west, and then there are some other industrial users to the north, as well as to the east. This property has historically been used for industrial developments, as far as the city can tell, South Wire and Coleman Cable, as stated, were the last tenants, and the surrounding properties, such as the residences, have existed for over 50 years, we haven't seen much of a change in the area, it's been residential, industrial, kind of a mix. And here's the zoning map for clarification, so as you can see, the industrial is highlighted in kind of a black box, that is the proposed use that is being brought tonight, it's adjacent to other industrial to the east, and also to the west is pretty much an entire neighborhood of R3 residential developments. We sent out letters to about 80 properties in the vicinity, and I said we didn't get any, but we just got one tonight, a letter of support. And then, to continue about the proposal itself, it has proposed outdoor storage on the northwest side of the property, so where Washington Park and I believe Elizabeth or 11th Street connect, it's kind of hard to see, but the hashed marked part of the building is proposed to be demolished, it is about 93,000 square feet, and that demolished area is where the outdoor storage will be used, so currently, the building sits on the future site of the outdoor storage lot, so the proposed use is actually permitted by right in the industrial district, it is a light manufacturing and warehouse type of use, it is a roofing company, so one of the main things of this presentation is that the materials to be stored outside will be residential and commercial roofing materials. We stated to the applicant, you know, we don't want any hazardous waste or materials outside, nothing that would be a nuisance to any of the surrounding houses and neighborhoods, so it'll be mostly just materials used for roofing and commercial residences. And here is a proposed improvement, so as you can see, the building is no longer there, there's some nice trees on the west and to the north side, currently, it's one flat asphalt's kind of block they used to park, so where proposed, or the tenant is, or the applicant is proposing to put in some curbs and some trees, as well as landscaping and really spruce up the area. Some of the key conditions in the staff report I would like to point out, related to the outdoor storage itself, number seven, all work shall take place within the confines of the building, there should be no work outside, the only thing that should be done outside is to move the materials that are stored out there. Number eight, the outdoor storage area surface must be dustproof and hard surface, so there's no gravel or mud, and then number nine, materials located in the outdoor storage area must not be taller than the approved screening fence, so one of the things the city wanted to stay away from is, you know, stacks and materials being taller than the fence that can be seen from residences nearby. And just to give you the quick overview, so we got a conditional use permit for the outdoor storage lot in the industrial district, the business itself is by right, the conditional use is only related to the outdoor storage component, if denied, the property will remain vacant until more suitable user is identified, the tenant has stated, or the applicant has stated, that the tenant will not move in if the outdoor storage is not approved, they need the outdoor storage as a huge component of their business, so if it's approved, the proposed business will be able to use said outdoor storage for the storage of residential and commercial roofing materials. And here are the findings of facts for conditional uses, at this time, I will open the floor for any questions from commissioners, if they have any, for city staff.
How high is the fence around this property?
Yes, that is a good question, the maximum fence height is eight feet, so the storage materials can go up to said fence.
And have they presented a kind, the type of fence that?
Yes, I believe that applicant has actually brought some blown-up pictures of said fence, yes. Yeah, so when the applicant comes up, I'm sure he would be more than happy to explain the type of fence and things like that, yes.
How tall is the wall?
The wall? That's a good question, there are elevations, let me see if I can pull them up.
I'm guessing it's much, much taller than eight feet, and I guess the next question is, is the fence at the same place as the wall was, or is gonna, is gonna be removed from?
I believe so, that is a good question for the applicant.
That's her over there.
Yeah, that's a good question for the applicant, yes.
And how long has the property been vacant, this section?
December 2022 was when South Wire left, so, yeah, about two and a half years, almost.
Tyler, as far as the conditions, you started off at seven, so one through six, is that the standard?
Yeah, one through six are pretty much the standards, they must comply with all other city codes, such as fire, building, business license, yeah, things like that, pretty much, exactly, yeah. No, there are some other ones related to lighting, so I think the, one of the notices that we returned or got sent back was about lighting on the property, so we have conditions related to lighting, and they can't be higher than 3,000 Kelvin, so that's one of the standards as well.
Commissioners, any more questions? Okay, can you come up, sir, can I swear you in? Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you. Could you state your name and your position in this?
My name's Randy Veselic. I'm a developer with SV Development.
Let's hear your story.
Well, my story, Tyler said it pretty good. You know, I had my little write-up here. I was just going to reiterate what he said. And the gist of it is, right now, if you're familiar with this property, it's been 50, 60 years, 60 years old, even a little bit. It was built, built, built. And the corner that I'm planning to tear down is the 93rd building that looks like this. And after it's done, for working with staff, new fence would be put up, sidewalk and landscaping. The fence is eight feet tall. You won't be able to see the materials on the inside.
Sir, could you get closer to the podium as you speak?
I'm sorry, sorry. Where was I? The fence is eight feet high. There's a sidewalk. There'll be new curb put around the property where this would be standing. This building right now, the reason it's been vacant for two years is this part of the building, the ceiling height's low. The column spacing is bad. The mechanicals are outdated. The roof's leaking. It's just one thing after another. I was able to secure a tenant that wants to be in Waukegan. They're a publicly traded company. They will also generate you sales tax. They will do, once stabilized, about $15 million in sales out of this location. What else can I tell you?
Could you tell me about the fence itself? Is it a cyclo fence with a fabric, or what is it?
The one illustrated there is a PVC fence. I will work with staff or the city. Any recommendations? I'm not married to one type of fence or another. I just want to make it look good.
You should hire the guy who's here first.
Excuse me?
You should hire the guy who came here first.
Did I hire the guy? What? Oh, that... No, I'll hire that guy. I guess if the price is right, right? But it also needs to be secured, and it's also sensitive to, you know, have it screened, you know? And I'm going to do as much as a landscaping. So, you know, right now, in my opinion, it doesn't look good. You put curbs, you put some landscaping, put some trees, put the right type of fence. It's going to be an upgrade.
Is the fence at the same place as the wall of the building or farther back?
It depends where. Most of it's set back because the right-of-way... What's it called? The public right-of-way? That's where the curb goes. And then the... It's like 10 feet with... That has the sidewalk. And then you have the trees. I think it's... The wall's a little farther. And right now, the height of the building will be... Is taller than this. Yeah. But in the front, it'll be substantial difference on 11th Street. The impact currently, if someone came... If I didn't do this and someone came and rented the building. There's right now 12 or 13 loading docks. It's actually going to be reduced. This tenant will have three trucks and only a handful of deliveries a day. They do them in the morning. They come back. They deliver them in the morning. And they will operate in the Waukegans' business hours.
Okay, thank you.
What about lighting?
The lighting? All the lighting will be appropriate per code. And if it will go towards the yard, it's not going to be... Whatever is allowed by code, that's what the lighting will be. We're asking for no special requirements for lighting. Plus, there'll be security cameras. And the property will be kept up. I don't know if you've been by it right now, but if anybody's in need of a couch, there's a couch hanging out front. There's a couple of chairs hanging out front. You know, with a quality tenant that I'm bringing. And, you know, we take pride in what we do. And the plan is to make it sharp, and I think it will be a plus.
Do you own the entire facility, all those little sections of it?
Yes, there's five buildings on 7.1 acres.
And how many of them are currently occupied?
Zero.
Okay.
This tenant's taking the majority of it.
And the business hours that are listed in here, I believe, are eight to six, listed in the presentation here. And it says daily. Does that mean seven days a week or five days a week?
I don't think they work on Sundays. Again, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I had the discussions with the tenant. They had per code. I am not asking, or is the tenant asking, for variance on working hours?
Okay.
And I think in your plan too, you're going to blacktop the whole area so there won't be any dust or dirt other than a demolition, correct?
The... Where the building's being torn down, that will actually be concrete. In the back of the existing parking lot, yes, that will be resurfaced. And if you know in the front of the building on 11th Street, if you've ever driven by it, it's all horrible. You know, the asphalt is coming apart. So that's where the sidewalk's going to go and the parking in the front. Actually, the parking's going to be reduced in the front. It's not going to be a whole sea of asphalt in the front because we're going to have some greenery and shrubs.
Any other questions, Commissioners? We do have one write-in supporting document. Is there anybody in the audience that came here to represent themselves in this matter? Hi, I'm going to swear you in. Can I just raise your right hand? And do you swear to tell the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Could you state your names and where you... How this would impact you? Where do you live?
My name is Rosie Jones. I live at 1429 12th Street. My property, we've owned it since 73, the end of 73, so I've been through a lot. I'm doing an objection. I don't want to see that storage unit put in. I know it says outdoor, but I am concerned about the property, what's going to happen to the value of my property? And what about the traffic in and out days and nights? And I'm concerned about the school children at 12th and Washington Park. Parents or grandparents are there with children. And if those trucks are, whatever is coming through, there definitely has to be more traffic. There's one lady in the neighborhood. She lives on the other side of me. She's something wrong medical. She walks with a walker and walks a child, and she stops and rests. So what's going to happen to that lady? On 12th Street, the street is kind of narrow. So I'm just real concerned about this place. I have objection to the comment. This is my daughter.
Okay, so my name is Bridget Jones. I don't currently live in Waukegan. I live in Park City. I came here to support my mother. But I have been there for like 30 years. It was a very quiet street off of 12th Street. We've had three different businesses. We had the recycling business. We had Coleman Cable, Signal, South Wire. And they all had trucks, and they ran all night long. Now, he's saying there's only going to be three trucks that are going to run between 8 o'clock AM and 6 PM. Now, you asked if it was Monday through Friday, and he couldn't really tell you if it's going to be Monday through Friday. It could be on the weekends. My mom's an elderly lady. There's going to be different people coming into the area to make drop-offs. I don't feel like it would be safe for the kids. They are still over there. And then they do play in the streets. We do have a park behind the house. But there are kids that, you know, play in the streets, and I'm thinking about safety.
Thank you. Would you like to answer the questions, sir? Support them or tell them? Yes, please, come on up. Yeah, just sign in if you would, please, ma'am.
Okay. I got it.
Right now on 12th Street, that is... It is not a truck route. Trucks are not allowed on 12th Street. They have to come in and out on Elizabeth. So right now, there are already signs for no trucks on that street. I have no problem putting up bigger signs to make sure, increase the tickets. It's not our intention to endanger anybody in the neighborhood. Again, I feel the improvements I'm doing will actually, to where it is now and to what I'm doing, will actually enhance the neighborhood.
I have one write-in one. It was presented by Mr. Kenneth Volvelia, I believe it is. He resides at 1430 11th Street. And his comment was supportive, but he put conditions that he did not want manure, extra lighting, or cameras for security. So it sounds like he was worried that it might be a landscaping place for manure, I would imagine.
I guarantee no manure. Though there will be lighting, there will be cameras. His answer, his question.
I believe there are cameras there now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's nothing different than what already exists.
They don't work.
They don't work, but there's signs that say that there's cameras, so they don't work. Okay.
Nothing works.
Question on truck access to the property. You mentioned it comes in on... Currently, it's Elizabeth. Is that the intent after the...
Yes, again, I'm asking for no variance on a truck route. The trucks only could come in off 10th Street down Elizabeth.
Thank you.
And that's how they can go out.
Commissioners, are there any other questions?
I guess I'd like to ask the people who spoke. You were talking about 12th Street. So if no trucks are going on 12th Street, it seems like that issue is taken care of. Is that correct?
So on all of my knowledge, when I did live there, the trucks would come through, whether there's a sign that says no trucks or not. The trucks still come through. So the young man that talked about they'll come off Elizabeth and 11 Court or 11th Street. So 11th Street is wider than 12th Street. But regardless, I'm thinking about the children that go down to the street, to the bus. If you lived in my neighborhood and you had kids, would you want a storage place be put in your neighborhood? Just tell me.
If it replaces a delinquent building, yeah, I would. I'd like to have activity next to where I live.
I agree.
So my mom's front door is front-facing of this new storage place.
Right now, you have a wall that's 20 feet tall of a vacant building, and he's putting in a fence that's eight feet tall and at the same place as the wall. And everything behind it can't go above the fence height.
See? So... Okay, go ahead.
You're going to have noise and people talking and laughing, debris or whatever, what comes along with everything, the trucks.
You know, all I can say is he's telling me that the trucks can't go on that street. And if they do, call the police, right?
Okay. Can... I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry. So I'm 45-plus years, okay? So I've lived there for about 35 years of my life. So seeing you got to call the police. Every time a truck goes down, do you know how long it takes Waukegan police to get over to where we're at? And it's non-emergency because a truck's going down my street. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I am, but it is a zoned and industrial zone.
Yes.
And, you know, I live next to this Victory Hospital. And I wish they wouldn't have ambulances going by every night, you know, and waking me up in the middle of the night. And I'm right in the flight path of the helicopter going over to the helipad. But I moved next to a hospital, and that's what it's zoned for.
So I understand that, but like I said, my mom was there since 1973. She had me and my brother. All right, so we understand that it's commercial. I understand that. And he's saying, well, the trucks are only going to run between 8 o'clock AM and 6. We don't know if it's Monday through Friday. We don't know if it's a weekend. There are some things that, you know, we don't know. All I'm doing is just trying to speak up, to be a voice for the children. The children have to walk down, catch the bus. If you had children, I don't know if you do or not, but if you had children, would you want your children walking down here when the trucks are coming down?
He's saying the trucks don't go down that street. It's not a truck route, so...
Okay, no problem.
And I think the other thing that's different, if it's Coleman Cable versus a day, if I heard correctly, you're not talking about a lot of trucks going in and out. You're talking about three loads.
Step up to the podium, please.
And to your concern, I would just like to say this, that I know that it seems frustrating to you, but there are... You do have paths besides calling the police. You can contact the planning and zoning department. If the company that states that they're going to be doing a certain thing doesn't do it, you can contact planning and zoning, and planning and zoning can go out and investigate. And this is a conditional permit, so there's conditions that have to be met. So if residents are unhappy with what is going on after something moves into an area and there's conditions that they agreed to meet, you do have recourse. It's not just calling the police. And it might take a little bit of work if that's... If it becomes a problem. But you also have an alderman who can work on your behalf as well. You can go to your alderman and talk about these things. And they can come to the planning and zoning department, and they can come to the city on your behalf. So you aren't going to be left high and dry if things don't go exactly like we think that this gentleman is stating they will. I just wanted to reassure you that.
The company has three... Will have three trucks.
What you're saying is that those three trucks may come in and out two or three times a day. Basically, it's not going to be three loads a day. They may come in the morning, pick up, go out and deliver, come back, make another load and go out and deliver. Is that what we're saying?
Correct.
So it's a total of three trucks, and if they can do five deliveries a day, it's a maximum of 15 or something. We just don't know, right?
Correct.
Okay. Does that help with your understanding? Okay, if you want, please go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to let you know. When my father was alive, he came to zoning meetings. He came. And he brought that up as far as for Coleman Cable in different places, and the trucks and the noise and stuff like that. Okay, so are we looking at the big picture? We're thinking about how much money we can bring into Waukegan, because he said it was going to be 15 million. Is that what you said?
In sale.
Okay, 15 million dollars in sales. And then you're talking about, okay, so he put in... Going to put in sidewalks and curbs. Sidewalks and curbs should automatically be done in that neighborhood regardless. Putting up a fence and putting in a walk path and stuff like that. I mean, it's nice and everything, but honestly, it just doesn't work in that neighborhood. If you want to bring in another business, just not storage, feel free to do so. But that's just how I feel.
I can understand your feelings. My only concern is that if I had children there that lived in that area and they had the opportunity to walk past an old abandoned building every day and see, just go more and more into disrepair and eventually fall down until the city has to take it over and tear it down, then I would say that it would be better to, with the pictures that he represented. I mean, it would... It looks good, and granted, it should, and it is a condition permit. So we put conditions in there that they have to...
we put conditions in there that they have to maintain. And like Commissioner Haynes brought up, it also is a conditional one. So it's conditioned that they abide by the conditions. So I would just ask you to think maybe, I can understand your concern, but there's always two sides of the coin, as you know.
I understand.
And I would rather be optimistic that this is gonna improve the property value because it's actually gonna look better.
Okay, so if we wanna fix that, just tear it down. Tear the building down.
That's what he's gonna do. He's gonna tear the building down.
Tear the building down and put in storage. That's exactly what he's gonna do. So if to fix the problem, just tear the building down then.
Well, this is an industrial, this is zoned as an industrial zone. It's been zoned as an industrial zone for many, many years. So as the city, our obligation is to do the best use of the property within the boundaries of the city. And if this is zoned as this industrial, light industrial use, then we have to find the best use for it. And that's our decision, well, that'll be our decision tonight, as to whether we think having a vacant building there or nothing there, or a commercial business that is saying that they're going to improve the property and maintain it, that's what our decision has to be tonight and what is best for the overall community. So, thank you for your comments, I've been very appreciative.
Chair, may I make a clarification? So what's before the commission tonight is not whether there's a better use or whether it should be vacant, but whether this particular use that's proposed would be appropriate in that space. And so as you make your determination, you should be considering specifically the use proposed and the appropriateness of it in that, at that address.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a comment, not a question. I'd rather not have this look like the storage that is taking place on the south side of Sheridan Road between, well, let's see. It's a lot of tile and, if you know what I mean...
At the curve, yeah. I know exactly what you mean.
It's around the curve, and that's pretty nasty.
Okay, no more comments? Do we have a motion to accept or to disapprove?
I'll make a motion to adopt the findings of fact and recommend approval of a conditional use permit as set forth in zoning calendar 2781.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any other comments? Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, but I'd like to have a caveat that there's an opportunity to review this after 90 days after implementation. And I'm sorry, I probably need to amend the motion to do that.
So we have a motion on the floor. I believe that that's one of our standard conditions.
Yes, the last one that's on the report should always be the, you know, if you have any issues after 90 days, you can bring them back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And partly I wanted to make sure that you knew that we do that.
Yeah. Condition 14, I can read it into the record if you would like. The operation is subject to review and assessment by the Planning and Zoning Commission commencing at the time of the approval of the conditional use permit. Such assessment will determine the applicant's compliance with the conditions outlined in this section and the standards for a conditional use as set forth in section 4.08D of the Unified Development Ordinance. Any findings of non-compliance may result in the revocation of the conditional use permit.
So, so yes.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bill?
Let's see. Yeah, so, and I voted yes too, so it passes, but just your understanding here, we just advise the city council on this occasion, on this type of permitting. So the next meeting, I believe, is what, May 5? May 5 at what time?
We don't have a meeting until around 5:00.
Okay, so sir, you'll have to be back here to represent yourself then. So good luck with it and thank you for trying to improve Waukegan. Is there any other discussions that we wanted to bring up, any of the commissioners?
I just wanna say I am pleased to see the progress on the Old Ramadi insight. Thank you very much.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.